Thanks for everybody coming tonight. This is a Windsor on Air Select Board Forum. We have, I'll just give some basic, I guess, ground rules. We're gonna have Paula as a timekeeper with two-minute responses per each question. If there's something that you feel like you want to expound on after the initial six questions that I've given you guys, we'll just let you do that at the end. At that time, too, we have time for questions from the audience. If anyone has any additional questions, nobody's online, but same thing if somebody just come online. And what else? So, yeah, like I mentioned, there's six questions that these folks have already heard, so they might have some pre-planned answers. And we have, I gotta update this, Emma and Eric are running for the two-year seat, and Mary is running for the three-year seat. So what I like to do is like a serpentine first. Emma will get the first question and answer first, and then Mary will get the second question and answer first, and Eric will get the third question and answer first, just so each person gets a chance to answer first, no one's going last or whatever. So let's start with Emma. Please just introduce yourself, share your background, and why you are running to be a member of the select board.
Hi, my name is Emma Cadbury. I have been living in Windsor since 2019. I'm not from here, I'm from Louisiana, and I found a very special place here, and I feel very passionately about Windsor and the people that live here. There's a lot of different kinds of people that live here, and kind of one of the only common factors in the people that live in this town is that they're all incredibly passionate about it. And I'm running for this seat because I think I learned a lot in my first term, and I'm hoping to be able to be, if I'm able to be re-elected, be a little bit braver in my second term, and do more to voice things that need to be voiced on the select board in this town. And I feel myself blushing, that's pretty much it. I live and work here, and I care about this town, and I'm excited to be here to try again.
Great, thank you, Emma. Mary?
Hi, my name is Mary McNaughton. I've been a Windsor resident for almost forty years now. My husband and I have raised two sons, CJ and Michael, who have attended the school system here. They both continue to live in Windsor. When my kids were in school, I volunteered in their classroom school trips and was actively involved in the teacher-parent group. I'm an LPN by trade, and at one point, I worked in the Windsor School System per diem in the nurse's office, along with sits at Mount Scotty Hospital and Darmitchik Medical Center. Two years ago, I served on the town budget committee until my husband came along and decided that he wanted to be on the budget committee, so I got off, and he's been on it the last couple of years. I served as the chairperson on the Justice Equity Conclusion and Diversity Committee from April of 2023 to May of 2024. I think I possess quite a bit of institutional knowledge of the town, as for the past five years, I've attended and participated in select board meetings, and I've done a lot of volunteer work with nonprofit organizations regarding food security issues, free school meals during the summer, and directly involved when there's a school supply drive and numerous other ventures. I'm currently retired. I've been and continue to be actively involved in the community, and I like to stay current in what's going on in the world and what's going on around me. And I'm running for select board because I believe I can make a difference in my own backyard, and I think that's the place to start. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Mary. Eric?
Hi, my name is Eric Solnstadt. I'm a natural-born US citizen, I'm a Caucasian male, and I'm a member of the Generation X. I was brought up Catholic. While growing up, I moved several times a year, and I lived in many different states as well as a multitude of towns. I have attended Franklin Pierce College Satellite Campus, and I studied at Dartmouth College, majoring in criminal justice. In recent years, I was nominated and voted in as a justice of the peace right here in Windsor. I am currently a property owner here in Windsor. I hold more certifications in different areas of life than anyone that I've ever met that I know of, and I'm running to be a member of the Windsor Select Board because I believe my community can benefit from my life experiences, and this is a way I can contribute to serving my country.
Okay, thank you, Eric. So our second question, we will start with Mary. What is a specific priority that you hope to achieve as a member of the select board?
Well, a major change that's going to be going on in Windsor coming up in the next couple of years is hiring new town manager who retires in June of 2026, and I think it's really important to have a cohesive board who's going to be looking for a replacement for him, and I really would like to be part of that decision-making process. So that's one of my biggest priorities.
Thank you, Mary. Eric?
Well, my priority while serving as a select board member, I hope to achieve is to help create a safer environment for all by ensuring all the fire hydrants, as an example, are in good working condition. I have noticed several hydrants over the years with black plastic bags covering them, suggesting that they need attention.
Thank you, Eric. And Emma?
I fear I do this quite frequently, but I definitely want to echo what Mary is saying about the hiring of a new town manager. I think Tom Marsh can be a tough cookie sometimes, but I think he's done the best that he could to take care of this town while he's been at the helm, and I think filling his shoes is gonna be pretty difficult. I'm also really hoping to do what I can to make sure that some of the programs that are going on in Windsor right now continue, like Micromu. I know we're gonna be voting on a town meeting, and I'm hoping to do what I can to support that continuing here in Windsor. I think, and that was something I looked into, that is something that's pretty necessary, and I think a prison, excuse me, a pretty reasonable expense for the people of Windsor, so I'm hoping to do that.
Thank you, Emma. For our third question, we will start with Eric. And let me just ask the question, it's, are Windsor municipal taxes too high or too low, and why?
Well, at this time, I believe Windsor's taxes are too high. As an example, my property taxes have more than doubled, and I have not yet seen any benefits.
Thank you, Eric. Emma?
Not, they're not too high for lack of trying, is what I would say. I think I've watched the budget process go through the last few years, and I think there's a lot of teeth-nashing and hand-wringing and a lot of effort being put in by the town offices to make sure that they're not over-asking and that they're not overspending, and that they're doing things in a way that is pragmatic and also, you know, holding back. I don't think they're too high. I think I would have said that they were before being more involved with the select board, but no, I do not.
Thank you. Mary?
Well, I was looking at the town survey, and out of the 247 people who answered that question, sixty percent thought the taxes were too high, and twenty-six percent thought they were neither which way. Increasingly, I think it's difficult for any average resident to make their tax obligation. I mean, it's that way for my family, too. I think the average person is just difficult. But I think it appears, and I've been part of, been in the budget meetings also, that people want the same level of services in town, but they don't want to see anything increase, and that's just not doable. I mean, most of the biggest expenses in the town budget are driven by contracts and healthcare benefits, and that's across the country and the state, it's not just Windsor. So I didn't have, couldn't go either way. I mean, I just think it's a struggle for everyone these days.
Thank you. Moving on to our fourth question, we'll start with Emma. The issue of available and affordable housing is impacting our region. What impact can the select board have in improving housing opportunities?
In a nice way. I think a lot is being done for what the select board is capable of doing to support housing growth in Windsor. There are some properties that the town owns that the select board and the town manager have been kind of trying to wrap our minds around and move forward with becoming affordable housing in the area. I think that the people on the select board being open-minded about the use of the revolving town loan fund with new people that are gonna come in and they're gonna try new ideas in the area is gonna be pretty much the biggest impact we can have. A lot of it, frustratingly enough, has nothing to do with the select board and has to do with private business owners that are buying properties here, so that's not really much we can do about that, but people are, we are doing what we can to help with a sometimes seemingly unhelpable situation.
Thank you. Mary?
I agree with Emma. I was gonna touch on something that she had said also. New changes to the Act 250 rules, I think, are encouraging for development of housing, but the select board can only act as a conduit to the resources to facilitate the goals of more housing, to make it as seamless as possible for developers. And they should make it available where it's appropriate, the funds from the, you know, the bike fund sometimes wouldn't be helpful, and the revolving loan funds. I agree, there's not a lot the select board, those five people can actually do, because a lot of it is out of their hands.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I think the previous select board members have contributed to affordable housing, but I believe more can be done. The construction of the newest high-rise downtown helps, but I would like to see the old prison property revitalized in a way of additional housing if possible.
Thank you. Mary, for our next question, we'll start with you. The select board is the elected voice of the community. As such, how do you view their role in advocating town's position or proposed and existing state legislation?
I think the select board should advocate with the legislatures when things directly impact Windsor. Otherwise, I think their role is to facilitate providing opportunities for the legislatures to come to meetings with the community, knowing they're going to be here, and then engage with them directly, the representatives or whatever is on the agenda for that night that's gonna be discussed. I think that more people need to be engaged and do that, and I know our representatives have shown interest in being available for more select board meetings, and they have been, and I know they want to in the future, so that's what I think the select board role is.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I view the Windsor Select Board as a very important role in advocating the town's position on proposed and existing state legislation, just as it has been in creating Vermont's constitution. Windsor, being the birthplace of Vermont, I think Windsor's select board should always be included in all major decisions affecting Vermonters. Unity and freedom are not just words, they are words with meanings to live by.
Thank you. And our sixth question, we'll start with Eric. If you've previously been on the select board, what is one accomplishment you are proud of, and if you haven't, what is one civic project you have been involved in that you were proud of?
Well, I've never been on the select board as of yet, but one of the projects I have looked into, and there was actually several of them, but it was the painting of Windsor's United States Post Office. I brought the idea to the previous postmaster's attention. We discussed the matter, not only means of keeping up the maintenance, but also how the building looks and reflects the town's heritage, and how it is just one of many attractions Windsor has to offer visitors to our town. Another one was making sure that the American flag could be seen outside the municipal building. It took a long time, but as you can see now, they went from a full-size flag to trimming branches to putting up a smaller flag, and then they finally removed the tree. It should have never been planted there in the first place. And then there was a possibility, there was the thing about, well, when the snow gets plowed to clear, like parking lots near sidewalks, down by the resource room, there's handicap parking, and usually when the plowing gets done, the snow gets plowed up to the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk cleaner pushes it back into the parking space, which also forces people to park further out in the travel lane, and there's not much of a travel lane down there. And so whether the snow is soft, or slushy, or hard as ice, and whether you're handicapped or not, it's difficult to get from your vehicle to the sidewalk and back, especially if you're carrying things. So I ended up starting by, showing by example of using my plow years ago to push that snow from the front side of the sidewalk past the sidewalk. And then the highway department liked the idea so much that they've taken it over since then, and including when the parking spaces got repaved, they actually built up the park, the pavement to the top of the sidewalk, making it easier for plow to pushing the snow beyond the sidewalks, therefore making it easier for people not only to park in the spaces that are available, but also to go to and from their vehicles.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Emma?
Having been on the select board for the past two years, I would say that there's a lot more that, upon reflecting on my time, that I wish I had done differently than I'm necessarily responsible for, that I was involved in. I think a lot of what I've been able to do is just provide my voice and my presence and the energy that I can to some of the town organizations. I've been really, really, really honored to be the liaison to Jedi in the past two years. I think they're doing really incredible, really difficult, really important work, and I've been really happy to be part of some of the discussions that they've been able to have during their meetings and during their functions. That's what I would say about that. I'm hoping to be re-elected so I can use some of the things I put in my toolkit over the last two years to do more and be more active.
Thank you. Mary?
I've done quite a bit of, been lifelonger than some people have, so I've volunteered a lot over the years, and everything I've worked on has always been really important to me. For those that don't know, I've been the coordinator of the Windsor Community Dinner for the last few years, which is held a pre-meal, held twice monthly at Trinity Church, and it's put on by civic and business and faith groups, and I recruited those groups, and they all put on this meal out of their own pocket, and it's something that has gone on for quite a while, and I think it's a way of bringing people together over shared meal and making personal connections with people in the community, and that still goes on. In fact, we have one this week, and I'll just plug it, because the Mount Scotty School Board is going to be hosting, providing that dinner on Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30. And the other thing I'm really proud of is being one of the founders for the Overdose Awareness Day Committee with Tara Howard and Heather Prebisch, and that's every August 31st, and we're now, we'll be doing our fourth year in Windsor, so I think I'm proudest of those two major things, I guess.
Great, thank you. You all were very efficient with your answers, so I think we're way ahead of schedule. So for that, we can open it up to anyone that has questions from the audience, and it doesn't look like we have anybody online. If you do want to come up, just come sit here so you can be picked up by the microphone. Davis, come on up.
Yeah, I got one I can recycle from last week's one. So are we doing this like select board today, my update?
Yeah.
I'm Davis McBrock. So my question for the three of you is, what behaviors and attributes would you say are essential to being an effective member of a community board like this one?
Anyone want to volunteer to go first? Sure. Mary?
Sure. I think somebody who's very approachable, willing to listen. I think someone who can listen to other people, whether they have a different point of view, whether it's politics, religion, whatever, money, I think that's really important for the select board, and just being available. And I'm pretty available through all those other things I've done. Almost everybody has my email and phone number personally, so I think being able to get along with others and really listen, I think that's the biggest thing, just, you know, none of us are experts, and I've said this before on Jedi meetings, none of us are experts. Select Board, all the committees and the people who volunteer on it, it's just, you have to kind of, you know, give everybody a little grace and think they're doing the best they can, because they're not doing this for any other reason.
Same. I would say my buddy from Colorado was like, what is a select board? What is it that you do? And I was like, from the best I can understand, frankly, is just some lady in the grand scheme of things. The select board is kind of like, a town is being run by the town manager, not run by the town manager, but the town manager handles kind of like the day-to-day situations, and the select board is kind of like the five-headed human monster of the people that are contributing to the decisions being made. And I think somebody that can listen, somebody that can admit they're wrong and change their mind when they're given new information, someone that is level-headed and compassionate, and frankly, the biggest takeaway that I've had from this is you've got to think before you're speaking, because you need to know, even if the room is not as full as you'd like it to be, or there's not as many people online as maybe there should be for something that is this important. People are listening, and there's a lot of people in this community, there's a lot of kids in this community, and it's extremely important to be cognizant of how far your voice might carry, even if it doesn't seem like it's going to, given the population level in this current room right now. And I think, yeah, approachable is a good, I would like to think that you need to be part Labrador to be able to do that, because it's not, people don't always approach you and say, oh, my gosh, I really love everything that's happening. A lot of people will see you and say, hey, I have some issues right now I'd like to discuss, and that's not always fun, but being able to take that in stride is very important.
Thanks. Well, I think it'd be a good idea if you're a person on the select board, is open to entertain new ideas and to pursue them regardless of what type of person approaches you with the idea, you know, whatever, whatever the background is, whether they own land or own a business, or they have a lot of money, or they have none of that, whether they're from this town or anywhere else, because all ideas, no matter where they come from, could benefit everyone, and you never know where the ideas are gonna come from. And to be very, very transparent on what has happened in this town and what is happening in this town, and what could happen in this town.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? I was scratching some notes down. This kind of goes along with that, Davis's question, but also something that Sue brought up. What kind of personality or characteristics do you think will need to be embodied in the next town manager?
A sense of humor, I really do think, and I think somebody that's gonna be able to take in the big personalities that we have here, and someone that's willing to listen to a lot of the hard-won and earned knowledge of the, you know, lifers that we have here, somebody that is gonna be able to kind of understand the complexities of this town and open it, or welcome it with open arms rather than freeze at the sight of it.
I agree with Emma. I mean, I think it would be great to have whoever that next person is to really understand what it's like to live in this community and really get to know the people of the community. I don't know what characteristics to put that under, but, you know, I think that would be really important, and I think somebody who can fiscally do things with money and go after grants in their personality, that's capable of doing that, and can see the bigger vision of things sometimes, is going to be important.
Well, I have a bit of a different view, as well, as I agree with quite a bit of what's been said already, but from my point of view and my experience, less of an ego and less hiding behind the title and being more of a personable person would go a long ways.
I'll ask another question. It's getting filled in time. Are there, a lot of towns are going through the same struggles that Windsor is, and a lot of fiscal issues, a lot of housing issues. Are there any towns or projects that you look towards that you think Windsor maybe isn't doing now, or things that you think that we could aim to do, or are we all just in the same mud puddle?
I'm not really sure. I mean, I'd have to think about that for a while. I do a lot of reading, you know, different articles about the state of Vermont, but I don't know, that's a tough question on the top to come up with something.
Sure. Did you repeat that?
Sure, yeah, just that, are there, are there projects or, you know, towns that are kind of answering some of these issues that we're all experiencing in Vermont, the combination of raising budgets and housing issues and rural nature, aging population? We're all kind of feeling, we're all kind of experiencing, I go, I work in this realm a little bit, so my mind's on it a lot, but just wondering what the answer is.
If I had that answer, I'd be really grateful.
No, I know, I'm like, I want to find that town and then like shake them down till we know.
Sure. Okay, stop it, y'all. It's on, it's on, it's on you.
I think I might have missed something, because I still didn't understand what you were getting at.
Just, is there other towns out there that are kind of finding the key to solve some of these deep-seated issues that are plaguing Vermont? Are you aware of any? What's the creative response?
I think they're all looking for the answers. I don't know if anybody's actually found any of them, but I think a lot of it has to do with, I think you have to kind of live the part in order to understand what's going on, like the housing the homeless. I think you'd have to actually be someone who has been there at one time, or close to it, or to know someone firsthand in that situation to understand better than if you were, say you always were, had better resources than other people. I don't like it when other people make rules for other people to live by if they don't fully understand what they're doing. And so that's one of the reasons why I have so many certifications in different areas of life than anyone I've ever met that I know of, is because you only live once, and I like to experience everything I can while, or majority of things, I gotta be careful about that one, majority of things while I am here. And to get firsthand experience, I think there's no substitute for that. Well, it was great that I didn't live in one town my entire life, that I also didn't live with just my family, I lived with other families, I lived in a foster home, I lived in group homes, I lived all over the United States. Even, is that saying about backpacking Europe? I backpacked the United States, and I'm not a guy who's over six feet tall, so that wasn't too easy for me, and I didn't do it with funds that I could just draw out of a bank account, I did it with nothing. So you come across a lot of people that live a lot of different ways in the United States, which is great, but there is the good and the bad, and I've experienced a lot of both. I've lived on the ground, and I've had absolutely nothing, and I've actually lived in a mansion for a while, and it seems like pretty much everything in between, with one exception, I haven't lived in a, I haven't lived in a, like a high-rise in New York City, or LA or anything like that, you know, like a sixty-story building. So, but you have to learn a lot, and by doing that, you get to understand different points of views, and you get different ideas, you get to see things differently than most people do. Like I said, better than, than, or differently, I should put it, differently than somebody that lives in one town majority of their life. It's something, it's like, it's something you can talk about, but you, I don't believe anyone can fully understand until they do it themselves. And the older a person gets, I think that helps with the life experiences, as well as the formal education and the informal education. Like, I got to live in a lot of places where, if I lived at a farm for a while, people showed me how to farm with livestock and another place with plants. Different places, I learned like masonry and carpentry and plumbing and wiring and Different places I learned like masonry and carpentry and plumbing and wiring and roofing and machine mechanics and whether it's farm equipment or industrial equipment, I worked with steam pipes and, and how to thread those pipes and what it takes for expansion and contraction. It's like, it's incredible what you can learn when you're out and about compared to being in one town. So when you talk about other towns, what they're working on, it doesn't, I don't know of any place where there's a gathering of, of, a bunch of minds that get together and say, look, this is what we're doing in this town. What are you doing in that town? But I've been in different towns and I've seen a lot of different things and I've experienced, experienced a lot of different things. And I think I could bring a, a lot of that experience and to the, to this town. And like I've, I've, I've done a few things without even being on the select board. And I think I have a lot more to offer. And I've been in this town for close to 30 years and I, and I, and I even bought property in this town paid in full, thanks to Norm Hook and his family. And I did it without having to go to, go through a bank. I've never had a mortgage. And my property is paid in full. My taxes are paid in full and I'm proud of that, too. So I think I have a lot to contribute. And I would like a chance to show this town what, what I can do being on a select board rather than like window shopping, looking in. I like to be on the inside looking out. And that's why I run for the select board. That's why, that's why also I'm glad that this town has known me well enough to know that I tell the truth and that I got nominated to be on the, as a justice of the peace and I got put on the ballot and I was voted in by town members to be a justice of the peace. And I've, I've been able to experience almost everything there is. Most people, when they hear about being a justice of the peace, they say, oh, you can marry people. So no, it's, it's even the rules that you're not marrying anyone. You're performing marriage ceremonies, but that's the most common thing. I said, and then they say, it's a, a county, I think they hold county office or county seat. And it's actually, there's more to that. And I think there's three levels. There's the town level, there's a, there's a county level and there's a state level. And at the town level, there's the sitting on the, the board of tax abatement and the, on the, the other one has to do with voting, actually. And at this moment, it escapes me because I have a neck issue which makes me forget at times and and then I'm going to skip the county at the second and go to the state one. And the, at the state level, that's where your authority is to be, be able to perform wedding ceremonies throughout the whole state. I said, but now at the county level, the one thing I wanted the most because like I said, I've gone, I've gone from being on the ground to, to owning property or living on the ground and owning property and, and other places in between is that it's a rare occasion, but it's possible that at the highest court in the state of Vermont, the Supreme Court, if there's a case that comes up and there's a judge not available, they choose from the list of, of justices of the peace to be a magistrate on the bench. And I would love to be able to do that. Just like I'd like to be on, on the select board also, not to help improve, also help improve this town, but to as, use it as a stepping stone and show what I can do at a state level. Because after being on the select board, I'd like to move on to the next step up in Montpelier. But all that takes time. And I have to start somewhere.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want to do a closing remarks too? I think we just kind of slid right into that.
I would like to reiterate that that was a sad question. But that's really all I said before. And the only thing I would say, and I guess I'll mark, mark this also into a closing mark is I don't know that there is a town right now that we can look to that is fight, you know, vanquishing the demons that we're trying to vanquish in Windsor. But I would say that there are a lot of very concerted efforts being made by different parts of people in the town. Like there's a lot going on with the planning commission. There's a lot going on with the Windsor Improvement Corporation, right? Yes. Windsor Improvement Corporation. And I would say that I, I am a single mom. I have a full time job. I work as a supervisor in a factory in Windsor. And a lot of what I can do is support the people that are really smart and really intelligent and really focused in what they're doing and very knowledgeable. And I feel that hopefully someone else in another town in a couple of years and not going to be next year. It's not going to be the year after, but we'll be able to say, you know, Windsor was able to do this, that and the other thing with, with housing Windsor was able to do this, that and the other thing with revitalizing their downtown. They, you know, I, I see a lot of potential here and I think that there's a lot of really good energy going into the town and I really hope be able to be a part of that if I'm able to be reelected.
Excuse me, I just remembered it's civil authority, that was the other.
In good illusion. I'm just hoping, I know I'm running out of votes, but I still would really like to have everyone's vote. And I hope that anyone who knows me, that my actions over the years has reflected my commitment to giving back to this community. I'm excited about supporting the forward momentum of Windsor. I think there has been a lot of good things in the works. There have been people coming into town saying, let me rehab this building as far as housing. We just, things aren't at a point where you can say, oh yes, you see it happening, but there is talk and forward movement on certain things. And the fact that the more you watch the select board meetings, the more you find out about all these little things. So, you know, I'm interested in what community members have to say. My door is always open. I'm available pretty much all the time. Is most of the people here in this room know? So please get out and vote.
When's that? Two weeks from today?
On the 4th, yeah, I actually think so.
It's on Mardi Gras.
Well, all right. I think we've, anything else anyone wants to say?
Good. Well, I would like to add that whether I'm on the select board or not, I wish the select board would add a little segment to the beginning of the select board meetings. Like public service announcements for the people that aren't able to get around to the, the three areas of town where they, they post things that are going on in the town, such as the library, the post office, and I believe here at the municipal building.
All right, great. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brandon.